Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're, oh, our seventh member is here. Okay, so.
Do you bring food?
For tonight's meeting, one of our regular members was not able to attend and another regular member is recovering from an accident. And so, Armin, if you're watching, we hope your recovery continues to get, or I hope your recovery is speedy. Okay, the, for those of you that are new to the meetings of the zoning board, it's divided into two halves. During the first half, we will hold public hearings on each of the applications before us. We'll do so in the order in which they're printed on the agenda. You can find a copy of the agenda in the little tray by our council's desk. For each one of the applications, we'll ask the applicant to come forward, state their name for the record, and then be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. At that point, we'll ask the applicant to very briefly describe what the, what the application is, and then members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions about the application. When the board members have finished, then the floor will be open to anyone from the audience that wishes to speak about that application, but about that application only. And again, people that want to make comments on the application will have to be sworn in. When we've heard from everyone, we will close the public hearing and then move on to the next item. When we've completed the public hearings, we'll return to the top of the agenda for the deliberation phase. During this part of the meeting, there's no further input from the applicant or the public, but it's an open meeting, so you're more than welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. Okay, and I guess I failed to mention that there are two regular members absent, and so our two alternates will be regular voting members during this meeting. All right, the first item on our agenda was adjourned from last month, Staples 2566 South Road, at the request of the owner. This application has been, is, has asked that this be withdrawn. In effect, what happened was that they changed the design and the sign that they wanted to put up at Staples will now be conforming to the zoning code, so they, a variance is no longer needed. As a result, I move that, item number one, Staples at 2566, I move that the application be dismissed without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Item two, Michael North, Ten Bird Lane. Is there someone here, Mr. North, or a representative? Okay, if not, we will skip that over and come back to it at the end. Item three, Hardee's Restaurant, 2275 South Road. Good evening. Okay, and so if both of you would just state your names for the record.
Brian Wheeler.
Barbara Fitzgerald.
Mr. Wheeler, Ms. Fitzgerald, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, I hope you got?
I do.
I do.
Be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to laws of the State of New York.
Okay, go ahead.
So, hello again. Following up on the meeting that we had last month where we are attempting to finalize the variance approval for the signage for our Hardee's Restaurant on Route 9, and in looking at the description of the variance request on the agenda, it looks like we are, it appears from the agenda that we're trying to put signage on the entire building, which is not the intent. And I'm much better prepared tonight than I was last time to hopefully simplify the request and be very clear on what it is that we're asking for. So if I may.
Turn it a little bit better.
Okay.
Can you see it?
So, as you can see, this is the front of the building. Now, this is not our building here in Poughkeepsie. This is a building of the same design that we built and is existing in Middletown, New York. And this is the same style that we would like to put here. The gray portion of the storefront with the star that's on the right side is already at the building. We have, that star is covered because it is not currently permitted, so we have it concealed. But we, what we are proposing is to put a Hardee's logo sign on there, which would be a total of 59 square feet and would be on the front side of the building with the embossed star that's just basically part of that gray part of the tower remaining as it is currently. And that is the extent of what we would like to put on the front of the building.
Okay.
We would like to add only two elements of the logo signage, one which is the Hardee's logo with the star on the stone tower, and also the lettering, which is not illuminated, it's just affixed to the building that says Char Broiled Burgers. And again, this is not the building here, this is the building in Middletown. We are aware that these images here, which are basically frames that have posters in them, we understand those are not allowed and we're not asking for those. And to clarify, on this side of the building, the logo sign that would go on that stone portion of the tower is 30.72 square feet in size, and the total square footage of the Char Broiled Burgers letters are 7.6 square feet. And as far as signage goes, frankly, that, that is all we'd like to request.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. As, as far as signage that we would like to add to the building, that is the extent of what we'd like to do. So the total square footage of those three components of the 59 square feet on the front of the building, plus the approximately 31 square feet on the side of the building, plus the Char Broiled Burgers of, call it eight square feet, that's right at 99 square feet.
So just to clarify, I, I have something that you dropped off, it's dated January 19th?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're proposing is actually a revision of this?
It's less than what's in there.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, exactly.
So, so just, just so we're really clear, there will be no signage on the west side that's facing into the, into the?
Correct.
Shopping center? And nothing on the north side?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So, um, okay.
So the, the one issue that we unfortunately need to discuss still, however, is, or are, the two stars that are embedded in the ephesus or the stucco on the sides of the building, which, as I had explained in the last meeting, in our prior experience, those had not been determined to be stars, those were considered architectural elements. And those are present in the building, and I actually have pictures, which I can show you, of what our Poughkeepsie building currently looks like, so you can see exactly how those stars are currently in the stucco. And again, just to reiterate what I said last time, we did not put those stars in with knowledge that they were signage, and we were not, absolutely not doing that to be disrespectful or aggressive, we honestly just were unaware.
Yeah, okay, okay.
It's intended for care.
Yeah, no, thank you. And just, this is a minor, but you've redesigned the directional signs, so you no longer need a variance for those.
Correct, that's, that fits within the size that's required, so, so that should not be part of the variance.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for that very clear presentation. We are required to submit everything, all these proposals, to the county, particularly when it's on a major highway. And so we've gotten a response from the county, so let me just read this into the record, and then if you want to comment, you certainly may. "To zoning board of appeals, Town of Poughkeepsie, the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development has reviewed the subject referral within the framework of general municipal law. After considering the proposed action in the context of countywide and intermunicipal factors, the department finds that the board's decision involves a matter of some concern." Action. "The applicant seeks to erect seven wall signs that collectively are more than five times larger than permitted. The property is located within the Highway Business District." Comment. "Within the BH district, a business may erect a wall sign of up to 100 square feet in area. The applicant proposes seven wall signs that result in a total requested wall sign area of approximately 579 square feet. The total sign area and the number of wall signs proposed is inappropriately scaled and will set an unfortunate precedent if granted. We suggest that the board require the applicant to provide a new sign proposal that eliminates or significantly reduces the size of the requested area variances. Recommendation, for the reasons stated above, and because granting the requested variance may set a precedent that encourages additional overly large sign applications, we recommend that the town not grant the requested variance. If the board acts contrary to our recommendation, the law requires that it do so by a majority plus one of the full membership of the board and that it notify us of the reasons for its decision. Signed, Owen Rafter, Commissioner, by Brian Keogh, Planner." Okay. I don't know if you have any direct comment on that?
No direct comment reacting to that. I think that it's pretty similar to the comments that they had made on the submission last week. And I guess the one thing that I would ask you to consider, because I think that the most controversial issues are related to the sign it, or what's considered to be signs in the stucco, those star-shaped indentations, if you will, in the stucco. One observation that I would like to point out is, unlike some of the other competitors or peers of ours in the town, we don't have on our building any large brightly colored awnings that specifically call out the corporate coloration or design of the, of those brands. So for example, all the Dunkin' Donuts have very large orange awnings, which are very particularly colored and are specific to their brand. TGI Fridays, as another example, has a number of those very large red and white striped awnings that again call, call people's attention to, to the image of the brand. We don't have any of those. We simply have, you know, some rather smaller black awnings just to provide cover and don't call out anything specific relating to the brand. So the, the stars that we have within the ephesus, I would suggest are subtle and, and a little bit less aggressive than some of the awning colors, and I'm just wondering if that can be considered as part of the thought process around whether those could be allowed.
Okay, all right, well, we'll, we'll get into that when we, when we take questions from the, from the board. My, my comment on what we've gotten from the county is that I don't believe that they were aware of your most recent proposal, namely the one that you said tonight, and I don't believe they were aware of the, of the other one dated January 19th. So that, I, yep, I believe we, yeah, we did, we did send it to them. But, so, you know, this, this is, this is my comment, I'm not speaking for the board. It, you know, from, from my point of view, what you've done tonight is in fact exactly what the county is requesting, that the board provide a new sign proposal that eliminates or significantly reduces the size of the requested area variances. I, I think you've done that. Okay. So I'm, we, we still have the voting requirement that we have to, if we adopt this, it has to be by a supermajority, but, okay.
And may I just, before?
Sure.
May I just make one more comment? In particular, on, on this side of the building, the area to the right of where the, the stone is, or it might be the, the red, I can't see myself, yes, this, this area to the right of where the red coloring is, if we don't have anything there on the exterior of the building, and that's the part that faces Route 9, that area is going to be without any features whatsoever. And I am concerned that if we just make that all one solid field, if you will, that the building is going to look very plain. And, you know, that's the area where the kitchen is, which is why there's no windows or doors along that part of the building. And I actually would suggest that having the star there actually adds some architectural interest to that side of the building and makes it more attractive than if it were just a flat field.
Okay, thank you. Christine, you have any questions?
No, no questions right now.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
Isn't, isn't there going to be another star, you said, by the Wendy's sign on the front of the building? The one that you have covered right now, is that going to?
Hardee's.
Hardee's. What did I say, Wendy's?
Yes.
Sorry. What is it, McDonald's?
Don't worry, we've learned to tolerate that, nobody knows Hardee's up here.
Is there, isn't there going to be another star up there, did you say?
On this side of the building.
Yes, the right-hand corner. Is that, so, we're going to have three of them. How big is that?
That one is the same color.
But that doesn't stand out as much.
This doesn't stand out like the other one does.
That one, I believe, is a total of 32 square feet in its entirety.
So that's in addition to the Hardee's sign?
Yes, correct.
Wasn't included with the number you gave us?
I'd, no, I, it is not, that's true. And part of what, you know, we're separating is the logo types of signage from the architectural types of signage.
We do have a question.
Yeah.
If that was a sign last month, it's still a sign, according to the right nail, the way our, our description is, so we have to address it as a sign. My question is, if they should paint it to match the color, like the brown?
Which one?
The, the sign he's got in the back, which faces nine, the part that, yes, if you painted that brown, you wouldn't notice a sign, it wouldn't be a sign, and?
The problem is, is that it's actually embedded into the ephesus, there's, it's, it's grooved in the ephesus. So what you're seeing is a photograph taken on a cloudy day, when on a, on a sunnier day, you will have a shadow that's outlining, you know, the, just because of the way that it's cut in, and that's true on both sides, you will always see it, so simply painting it over would not do it.
It would lessen the impact, but not make it disappear. And I would offer that if that is something that would help to paint that brown section on that side of the building, so that it was more subtle than it is now, that is a solution that we would certainly consider and would be a lot easier for us than having to redo that whole side of the building.
So really, unless, then, painting it wouldn't solve the problem?
Doesn't make it go away.
Painting it will not make it go away, though.
No, does not make it go away.
Art, anything else? Okay, all right, um, yeah, I've got, got two or three things, and let's start with the front of the building, where you have essentially a sent, a panel across the top there with a sign and then with the star logo. Now, if, if we, if we added together the Hardee's sign and then the star that's the architectural logo, okay, and considered that one sign, all right, then that would be, what, roughly, it's roughly, what, 59 square feet and then?
59 and 33.
33. So that's, what?
93.
Nine, yeah.
Or 92.
Yeah, 90, 92 square feet. You're allowed by right a sign of 100 square feet, so we could, we could continue, we could consider that sign in its entirety to be the, the sign that you're allowed by the code.
Okay. And, and that, by the way, is our most important one, so that would be very helpful.
Right. Then that would leave us with, then really just what is facing Route 9, which is a sign of roughly 31 square feet, and then the lettering, which is roughly eight square feet, okay. And so, in, in effect, you'd be asking for variances for, for those two signs on the east side?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and that would be everything?
Yeah, excuse me if I could, but the part of that signage is already there by right signage. In other words, they are allowed 100 square feet facing the public road, so the east side portion of that are already allowed to have.
This is not facing a public road on the, on the south side?
No.
Facing the driveway. If they were, if they were the next lot down where the Dunkin' Donuts is, it would be a very different conversation, because Neptune Road is a public road.
Okay.
So all I'm suggesting is, in terms of sort of framing what, what would be subject to variance and what would not?
Okay.
The, on the east side of the building, the main signage with the star and the Hardee's by right.
Okay.
The second Char Broiled Burger.
Char Broiled would require a variance.
Even though it's all under 100 square feet, that requires a variance.
And then we would have a?
And everything facing the access driveway.
The south, yeah.
Fabricated steel frame on the, on that south side would require, be subject to variance.
A variance, but we could do that as a single sign?
Yes.
That includes?
Yes.
Both features?
All of those elements, right.
Right, because it's a sign, okay. All right. Okay, I mean, I, you know, I'll let the rest of the board speak for themselves, but it seems, seems to me, for me, anyway, that would be an acceptable way to proceed. Now, about the, the stars on the side of the building, I have some serious reservations about that, and they're, they're, they're twofold, really. One is that the star is so obviously a, a corporate logo, and, and it's, and it's so big that it, and I also, I guess then the third thing is, I do worry about precedence of having, you know, other, other people come in with new or existing buildings and, and want to put something, a large logo up on a, on a wall and say, well, it's a, it's an architectural feature, and does it make the building look a little bit more interesting? I suppose. On the other hand, our code is real clear about what constitutes a sign, and I don't want us to get into a situation where here or down the line, it, we, we have to decide, well, you know, i- is it something that enhances the architecture or the look of the building? Because, you know, what's the old line, you know, De gustibus non est dictum. And, you know, that's, it's, it's not our job to decide what, what looks nice or what looks cool or whatever. So anyway, that, so, so, you know, you know, right now, and, and you can talk me out of it if you want to, is that the, the signs you've proposed are, are fine, the, the two logos on the wall, I really, I, I don't think I could, I could go there. Anyway, Paul?
If anyone else besides me was inclined, consider this architectural rather than signage, would the applicant have to apply for an interpretation, or could we put that in part of our deliberations?
I mean, I have read the definition of sign, and it includes, you know?
It does.
Logos and, and, you know, corporate symbols and, I mean, it's, if I could, Mr. Chairman, too, a number of years ago, the TGI Fridays has that tumbler with the Y's, which is, you look at it, it's not obvious what it is, but it was a gotta have on the building, and it was sort of their logo, it was a symbol of.
Right, we treated that as an architectural part of the building and not a sign?
It was determined to be a sign, came, and you, you granted the variance for it, or the board did, I should say.
That's not my recollection, my. My, I seem to argue that that was architectural and did not need a variance, was my recollection.
Yeah, you granted a variance on it, or the board, the board did, I should say.
There were some other parts, though, that were... The other decorating on the building was the same.
They had a large mural on the north side. And there was like Statue of Liberty and some other elements, you know, for patriotism or whatever. The original sign included Coca-Cola and some of the other sort of corporate drinks and things that you buy. Those were, and I don't recall, I don't think that came to you for an interpretation, but those were removed. Once that was done, it was no longer classified by the zoning administrator at the time to be a sign, was a mural. The tum- the tumbler came in to you for a variance and it was granted.
Okay.
To answer your question about whether they would need an interpretation, I honestly don't know, I don't have in my packet the denial letter from Sarah. And I'm guessing that it says, the sign, and it's not available, and what they've requested from you is a variance. I would think that if that were something the applicant wanted to proceed, and that was the direction that the board wanted to go, the best way to do it would be for them to withdraw their application for the variance for those two portions of the sign. And then if they wanted to proceed with it as, for a determination that, an interpretation that it was architectural, they might do that. But given the plain language of the code, it would come down to a determination of this board as to whether a star was logo or architectural. And we could probably get the sense of, from the board, on that note, before that process was undertaken.
And, so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it as being architectural, particularly in light of whatever precedent you're concerned about setting.
You, you're not concerned that we might be facing this in, in other cases?
I think we might, but I, to me, this is perhaps different than the tumbler. I think it's pretty subtle.
See, to me, it's, it's, it's more clearly a logo here than the tumbler was. I mean, many of us that went on the field trip, and we couldn't figure out what on earth that goofy thing on the wall was. And we had to be told that it was a, a, a tumbler full of ice. Who knew? This, this is so clearly part of the corporate logo. But to me, it's unmistakable.
But, and going back to what the gentleman said, you know, with Fridays, their awnings are obviously Friday logos. Where do we draw the line on that? We've allowed that. I mean, nobody else has got an awning like that except Fridays.
Well, it's a, it's, I mean, it's a color pattern.
It's unique to Fridays, or our flag, take your choice. About the blue. But Fridays is the only one I know around here flying awnings that are red and white striped. So where's the, where do we draw the line on that?
Well, I'll, I'll, you know, other people could put up red and white striped awning.
Good.
I have a feeling if somebody tried to put up a star like this, Hardee's would be filing suit for, for trademark violations. You know? Suppose, suppose Wendy's side of the wall.
I can't say Wendy's again.
No, you can't.
It's okay, I don't have any feelings on that, that's fine.
No, I know, but...
Is it just you and me?
Sounds like it.
Tony?
I have no questions. I, in my opinion, it's an architectural feature. I, I don't view it as, having never known Hardee's, other than just the name, I'm not that familiar with it. And I think you've done a fabulous job at showing, wanting to be a good corporate neighbor in the area by the reductions that you've shown. So I have no other questions.
Okay, fellas?
What is the square footage of the star? Do you know?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
You're not gonna like it.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-eight, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine square feet?
The one on the east side, which is the one that's here on the building, is two-hundred-and-twenty-nine square feet.
That's the one facing Route Nine?
Correct.
Okay.
And the one on the other side of the building is a hundred-and-sixty-two square feet.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Couldn't even see that one when you walked around the first time. Now, is that the kind of painting that you are proposing to do on that one?
Yes.
So you would paint it?
This section, the brown section, we would make it the same color.
Tan.
Same color as the rest of this side. To de-emphasize.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it is actually, because I, I really didn't see it the first time you walked around with it. And I'm not familiar with Hardee's, you're not a, a drive-thru, so...
We are.
You are?
Yes, and in fact, the picture on the left is the drive-through side of the building.
And there's no signage on it?
No, that's inside towards the shopping center. So there is no value to put any signage. We did have, at one point, a request to put a star, a, a metal star on this side of the building, which we have withdrawn.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so, I, I think, I think we need to get a sense of, I think, a sense of the board on how to proceed here. Does, does anyone have any problem with the, the current proposal on the, the signs? You know, the, the Hardee's signs and the, you know...
The two that I asked for today.
Right.
I'm good with that.
Right, so in other words, the big
Technical.
sign on the south side that includes the, 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 the star, that one solid piece.
I have a problem with that if, if my argument is that that star is architectural. So I don't, if that's what you're gonna do, and that kind of takes any argument out, that the other stars are architectural, so...
So you wanna, you would consider that to be an architectural?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're, we're simply gonna disagree on that one.
Apparently so.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair, you're still as part of a public hearing. Would you make sure the audience doesn't have any further comment?
Yeah, yeah, thank you for... Let me then get a, get a sense of the, the large, I guess, what they're debossed stars, I guess, on the, on the east and west sides. Is the sense that those are architectural and therefore would be, would be allowed? Or are they signs for which there would have to be a, a separate variance?
And may I interject for just one moment?
Yeah.
I would ask you to vote with the assumption that as soon as the weather allows, that we would take the area on the east side that's brown and make that the same tan color to the corner to de-emphasize that in case that makes it helpful. Because that would be considerably less work also for us to do than to get rid of the entire star.
Okay, okay.
So the answer to that is that it would not take the problem away if he did that, right, Neil? Is that... He paints it tan all the way to the end of the building, does not take away the, the need for the variance?
The star is still there. Right, because it is, it is literally cut into the Evis.
Okay, so there really isn't any way to fix it without...
But, but, if we, if the consensus of the board is that that's an architectural feature, then it doesn't need a variance. It's okay as it is.
Well, do we get to make an interpretation without
Well, that's
being asked?
Kind of my question, I guess maybe this is something for the board deliberates. And I'm, I'm gonna ask this with all due respect to the board. The, the applicant has not requested an interpretation. So question one, I'm not a hundred percent certain that the board, maybe the board has the authority and power to make an interpretation on the fly like this. And if that is in fact true, if you can be guided by, by Lisa's analysis on this, one of the things going forward is, as part of your deliberation and decision, if the majority of the board determines that it is an architectural feature, staff, particularly the zoning administrator, needs to understand the basis for that determination. And because this will create a precedent for other applicants, you know, under similar circumstances and facts, what is clearly a, a star, which is a logo, why is that an architectural feature? What makes that an architectural feature? And I'm gonna ask the board to be very specific in its determination, because Sarah's going to need the guidance going forward. This is going to come up again.
My recommendation, if the board wanted, if it's, if the sense of the board was that it wanted to consider whether this was an architectural feature or not, without having to make a decision, you could vote on the variances for the two signs that are actually undeniably signed. And then, my suggestion to the applicant would be to submit a letter to Sarah asking for an interpretation that would, and Sarah's response, since she proposed it for the variance, would be that it, that they are signs. And then the applicant would then apply to this board for an interpretation that they are architectural details rather than signs. The applicant would be free to submit information that it has been treated as architectural details and other codes, code language, et cetera, because the board should have more information before it, before it makes a decision like this. I agree.
See, everybody's head going down. Can I ask one more, one more question?
Yeah.
Is, is that star a trademark? Or would that make a difference versus just, would be considered a logo?
Well, there is a star that's used in the logo, but there's a lot more to it than that. Number one, it's much, much more brightly colored, it's yellow. And it typically has a smile on it as well.
Right, but would that then, does it matter if it's a trademark or just a star on the side of the building? I don't, I don't know.
There are other types of marks which are registered that are not necessarily trademarks. And some of that is information that we would want from the applicant if you were going to consider whether this was in fact an architectural detail or not.
This, I've been told by Hardee's that this is not technically a logo from what they perceive, but rather, for this design of the building, that they consider this to be an architectural feature of the building. That's what Hardee's has told me.
If I were Hardee's, that's what I would say, too.
Would you like the job? We're hiring.
Okay. Well, let's, right now, let me just ask, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application for Hardee's? Okay, seeing, seeing none. Okay, then, if, if everybody's kind of okay with this, what I suggest is that when we come to the deliberation, we consider the, the request for the variances on the south and, and the east sides. I think there's a consensus on that, although Paul is not sure that the one on the south side is completely a sign. But then we, we take no action on the stars and we'll leave it for the applicant to request an interpretation on whether or not they're, they're, it's architectural or, or a sign.
Do we need to set a date and when that would happen? Or could they stay there?
Well, they
Timeframe?
Yeah, they would have to go to Sarah. And
But we're not talking six or seven months from now, we're talking really...
Well, they're in violation now, according to Sarah, right?
Yeah, they installed without benefit of any...
It would be, behoove them to act quickly.
So it would be next month?
Just a question, so...
Presumably.
That would assume that Sarah would issue her determination as to whether it's an architectural detail or not. I would want, if that were the board's intent, I would ask the applicant to formally withdraw the request for the variances for, and I think just to make it consistent, I would agree with Paul to make it the three stars, so that the board tonight would only vote, if you were so inclined and you closed the public hearing, only vote on the sign for the front of the building and the charbroiled burgers, charbroiled for the side of the building, and then leave open the question of the three stars that are already existing, because I think they should be taken together. If one star is a sign, then it would, you, I would like the board to consider what differentiates the other two stars if they are not signs, if you want to consider the one star to be a sign. I don't think that's a decision to make lightly.
Okay. Yeah, well...
And Mr. Chairman, you may wanna poll the rest of the board to see whether there's support for it, anyway.
Well, I, I think that's true, is I... So, let, let's see, how do folks feel? Are you, architectural or sign?
Well, it, it, the law says it's a sign, so it's...
But how do you feel? That's how you feel about it.
You can't just throw it off the top of your head, it's got...
The board is constrained to find within the language of the zoning code. And if it says, so you'd have to explicitly do the analysis of what the code says now, and whether this, these particular designs are or not within the code. The county has certainly considered them to be signs, and Sarah has considered them to be signs by virtue of the fact that she...
Though, though, in, in, in their, in their last letter, they, they did, did not specifically address the, the large debossed on the wall. There's no, there's no...
They included it in the five-hundred-and-something square feet.
I was, I'm, I am not sure that that is the case.
When I added it, it is, yeah, definitely.
It is.
When I added up the total square footage from the first, from last month, it was five-hundred-and-something square feet with all of them.
Right, yeah, they, they clearly considered those two signs as part of the overall square footage.
Five-eighty or something.
Okay, okay, but some of these now have been removed.
Yes, that's true. The quantity has certainly gone down.
It's been altered, but the add number was based on the January submit, which included the north side.
Okay. Okay, well. All right, so we're, we're back to trying to figure out whether, whether there's support of the majority of the board for pursuing the interpretation as an architectural feature.
I have a question, for the east side, which faces nine. That's, to include that star as part of the sign, that would make it a problem for an interpretation later on, correct? Can we, can we grant, or maybe they don't even need a variance then, if we exclude the sign portion, I mean, the star portion from that? Or can we not do that because it's right now considered?
It's, it's all calculated as one.
It's all calculated as one.
Right.
All right. So then, wow, it's a rock and a hard place.
Well, let's see. Paul and Tony are pretty clear that it, they consider it architectural.
Arts.
Art, architectural. I think it's a sign.
We're signed here.
So, like, I guess, if, if I could, Mr. Chairman, a question for Lisa now. The, the county's analysis included all of the signage as shown in the January submit, which included the north side, which is now gone. But it also included the two large Evis-embedded signs on the east and west, plus the other signs on the east and the south. My take is that whatever the board does, they're gonna need to do it by majority plus one on each part of this.
Probably.
So, I guess, going, kinda going back to how best to frame the... So I guess going, kind of going back to how best to frame the, the motion on the variances, you may want to vote east side with the two, actually, it's just, just the charbroiled over the window on the east side because the other side is by right. And then the south side is side signage, but without.
Okay.
The architectural feature that you're calling, okay. It's basically two motions, probably the easiest way to do it, I guess.
Okay.
And then you'll have to figure out what you want to do about the interpretation on the other. But I agree with Lisa, it's simpler to have them withdraw that portion of it and then go back to Sarah and then bring it forward to this board at a later date for an interpretation.
If it seems as if that's something that, right now, it seems as if the board is, it would be at least, well, two, three to two.
It's likely, though, the competition, composition of the board will change by several hearings from now, right?
That's, that is also true.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Jim?
Yeah.
Is there any merit to just, and I, with all due respect, I understand that you want to open, but the issue is clarification and precedent. Is there any reason that Sarah couldn't relook at this before we have to decide? Because it's, it's really about interpretation.
Okay, I, I, I am loathe to just adjourn this. I mean, I think there's some of this that we can approve. I think enough so that they can go forward with some of the signs and, and open. They, they, they have this, I believe you said that the star that's on the south side is covered for the moment.
Yes, sir.
But the other sign certainly would be needed if they're going to, if they're going to open. I, I think what I'm inclined to propose is that we go ahead and approve two motions, one for the Hardee's sign on the south side, one motion for the two, the, the.
The one.
The one, it's the one, just the charbroiled, the other's by right.
Is that right? Is there just, oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right. Okay, so just, yeah, just the, just the one on the east side. And then leave the other, the, the discussion and determination on the, 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 the stars that are, that are carved into the stucco and the star that's on the south side of the building to, you know, and, and a request from the applicants for an interpretation.
Well, the applicant has to withdraw those portions, you're suggesting that they withdraw those other variances about the stars, right?
Yes, I, I don't know that the applicant needs to do that tonight necessarily, but as long as, if the board were going to close the public hearing and then make it, do, have deliberations on the two signs and then adjourn its deliberations on the other two signs, the applicant would then have some time to decide and we might have some time to discuss things. We could certainly communicate about that.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
We're starting, we're starting to clock, though, once the public hearing is closed.
Right.
Yeah, but it's.
So if the applicant were going to withdraw, it would have to be done timely before a negative decision were issued.
Yeah, okay.
My question is, given the current state of the building, and just to update you, all of our inspections have all been approved and completed and we believe that we are on the verge of getting either a CO or a temporary CO, depending on the, the signage outcome of this meeting or whatever follows. We are hiring crew members and are, have an orientation scheduled offsite on Thursday of this week with the intent that we would start their training a week from Thursday to be able to open on the 23rd. How do we go about continuing to this process and this discussion without having to put up a big tarp over the side of the building, for example, while we, while we work this out? Can I say that, you know, we will continue to cooperate and we'll, we'll agree?
You would need, until the issue of those signs embedded in the Evis is settled, along with whatever the disposition of the one on the south side is, you would need to keep those covered. I won't authorize the issuance of a CO to allow you to, to open and hire staff until that's done and then maintain it till the board has acted.
That's a shame.
That's going to look real good.
Cover it with a big star.
Okay. All right, any further comments, questions? Let's see, I guess we, let me, let me move that, the, let's see, the directional signs, that, you're, you're in effect going to withdraw that.
We're going to be in compliance.
Okay, okay, so I move that in item number three, the first request for the variance, the directional signs be dismissed without prejudice. I move, and I further move that the application for the 32 square foot deboss star on the south elevation, the 229 square foot deboss star on the east elevation, the 162 square foot deboss star on the west elevation, and the 24.32 square foot starlight feature, fixture, no.
Says fixture.
No, the, yeah, the.
That's out.
That, that's out, yes, right. Okay, so the one that I want to get is the one that's on the south elevation.
I think it's the north elevation, actually.
Yeah.
The small 32 foot is on the south elevation.
South.
Right, okay, okay, and the 32 foot deboss star on the south elevation. And I further move that the application, or, and I move that all of those be adjourned to the March meeting. And I further move that the request for the 24 square foot starlight fixture on the west evolution elevation be withdrawn with, or be dismissed without prejudice. And I further move that the public hearing on the, oh, boy, sorting all this out, let's see, on the, the 59.92 square foot Hardee's appendage on the south elevation and the 7.58 square foot charbroiled burgers on the east elevation, I move that the public hearing for those two items be closed. All right, we got all that?
Second.
Mr. Chair, I think you missed the dismissal without prejudice of one of the 7.58 charbroiled burger signs.
It was on the west elevation, was it?
East.
On the.
It was originally one opposed on the east and the south.
On the south, okay, yeah, right. So that, yeah, that we dismiss without prejudice, the application for a 7.58 square foot charbroiled burgers on the south elevation. I, I think that's everything. So what we're, what we're doing is closing the, the public hearing so that we can, we can vote tonight.
Yeah.
On the two signs. And then all, then, then there've been several that are, are simply withdrawn and then we've got, we are adjourning the discussion on the, the stars that are, are logos or architectural features until next month.
Questions, please? And I, in all your discussion, I may have missed it, but aren't we only looking at one of the 58.92 square feet signs now, not two?
Yes.
So we need to alter that, right?
Uh, I thought I did.
I thought you said two, but I'm not sure, I wouldn't swear to it.
Okay.
But it is one, correct?
The one on the north end of the building is being withdrawn.
Oh, okay, maybe I need to be explicit about that, okay. So add, add to the motion that one of the 58.92 square feet Hardee's appendage signs on the north elevation, that application is being dismissed without prejudice. All right, anybody spot anything else in there? Okay.
Second.
Okay, any questions, discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, recousels? Okay, well.
Now, the rest of it we'll vote on later.
They have to come back.
Okay, so, so tonight.
Rest of it till March.
There'll be a deliberation on the two signs during the deliberation phase of tonight's meeting.
Right.
And then the rest of it will be pending for March.
When is your opening date that you had scheduled?
February 23rd.
23rd, and so he can open now on that date, is that?
He can open, I mean, the issue frankly for, for staff is until the question of the embedded Evis signs are determined by the board, there is a violation. If the board were to vote, say, tonight to grant it, no problem. If you were able to construct an interpretation, some point, fashion tonight, that's, you could do that, frankly, it makes my life a little bit easier. But so long as the question remains and is outstanding and is now being carried over to next month pending the applicant, going back to Sarah, making an interpret, a request for interpretation for consideration next month, the violation is not procured. And we don't, we don't issue COs for businesses to open where we have an ongoing violation. He can, he can temporarily remedy it by covering it up. I mean, it doesn't make the building look very great, that would be the answer to that. Obviously, he would like to open with the building as is and that's, that's the issue for, for staff to work out with him.
All right, well, to be continued.
May I ask, please, Mr. Wilson, is it possible that if we commit to Sarah or the staff in a letter committing that we will remove the stars if it is determined that the interpretation as an architectural element is not permitted? Would that allow us to open with the building as is without having to cover them if we commit that we would do that?
I, the problem is I still have the violation until the board has done something with the application. Frankly, it would even be easier for me if they were to deny it tonight, which is not a great answer for you, but even if they were to deny it tonight, I could work out a schedule with you that when the weather, you know, turned, you know, you could fill it in and paint it over. And we, in the meantime, in the interim, then, that would allow me to at least issue a temporary CO. And on my side, if you failed to take care of it by whatever date we agreed to, we would not renew the TCO.
And is it possible to say that if it is denied, that we would do that? Can we get to that same place?
They were to deny your application tonight?
No, that if we say that the interpretation is not accepted and.
Yeah, it's, right, right. In other words, I know, right, I know what I'm doing going forward, I hate it, and I can construct a timeline in which you and I could, could work and to get that resolved, yes. But I just don't know what we're doing tonight. That, and that's my real problem.
Okay. Perhaps as a solution, maybe I could attempt to write a letter to you describing the various possible outcomes and what we will commit to do.
I'm more than happy to work with you on that, yes.
We're, we're eager to open, as I'm sure you can imagine.
No, I understood, understood, yeah.
And, and we're also eager to cooperate with whatever the town decides.
Yeah, no, I, I have to work with you.
Okay.
In that case, then, you, you still need a decision from us.
I need to know what the board's going to do, right?
So that's not helpful to you for the 23rd?
Not, not for the very near term.
If we deny the entire request and adjourn it to the next month and then you meet with this gentleman to work out something for it, you can grant the temporary CO under those conditions, but if we approve part of it and not the rest of it, then you can't grant it.
I don't know what we're doing.
So it's better that we disapprove it or deny it tonight.
That's not, that's not the answer he's looking for.
I know, but, but that sounds like the only way you're going to get a temporary CO.
I mean, we're talking about covering versus not covering. I mean, and the reality is, is that he would prefer to open without the stars covered. But absent a, a decision by the board, when the request for the, for the CO comes in, my response is going to be, there's still an ongoing violation, cover them up, and then I can issue the CO to at least get him open.
Alternately.
I suspect that that's where we're going.
The applicant could withdraw the application for those stars tonight, then the board wouldn't have to make that determination, you could work out your schedule and the applicant could decide whether they wanted.
I could do that, too.
Do the interpretation. But if you either decided not to pursue the interpretation or it was not done within a timeframe, you would have to abide by the abatement procedures that you'd work out with Mr. Wilson.
I could do that, too.
But that would allow you to open without the covering of the signs.
Okay. And what's the downside of that approach? For me?
You, if the interpretations are not granted in your favor, the signs would have to be remediated and the violation removed in the short term, whatever schedule you work out with Mr. Wilson.
Which we intend to do, if that's what we have to do, anyway.
That sounds like it works for both sides.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, so.
So that's a question for the applicant. If you want to withdraw it tonight, then the board, I mean, then it would be officially on the record and you would be able to do that with Mr. Wilson as early as tomorrow morning.
Okay. And that sounds like the best answer for us, certainly, to do that, to withdraw those tonight.
Okay, so that would be for the, the wall star features on the west, the east side and the small one on the south.
And does that then preserve the ability, if we come back next month and they're determined to not be architectural features, could you, could we then add the star that's on the front of the building as part of that metal structure there?
If that's, yeah, you.
If you were to withdraw those, there would be nothing pending before the board on your application. The two signs would be deliberated on tonight and then that would be the end of it. So if you wanted an interpretation, you could craft the interpretation, the request for an interpretation in any manner. So if you wanted it to include the three or four or six or eight, you could have that discussion with Sarah, you would get a written decision from Sarah, and then you could request the interpretation from this board after that.
The, the thing that I'm trying to protect against is that star that's on the front of the building will be almost impossible to get rid of. You know, that, that is the, the challenging one and it's probably the least offensive one.
Can you fill it in?
Probably also.
Yeah, it's only 24 square feet.
Right, but it would, yeah, but.
It's not something you could fill in, it's a fabricated metal front.
Yeah, but they could come back and ask for a variance with that considered as part of a sign.
Yes, yeah, right. Right, which is the way we were treating it as part of the original notices that went out.
Right. So, so in fact, we could act tonight on that entire piece above the, on the south side that includes both the Hardee's and the star, considering the star as a sign.
If you consider the star as a sign, then you're setting a precedent that basically ensures that the other two signs on the side, unless you can find some substantial differentiating factor, are not architectural details.
Yeah, but they are very different.
I mean-
Very different.
To me, I think it's clear, the one on the south side is part of an entire panel that's now attached to the building. The ones on the east and west sides
Part of the building.
are on the wall, in the wall, part of-
Structurally.
Part of the wall. Maybe, maybe not. They're not structural, you know, out of here. So, to me, there's a difference, but-
Mr. Chair, you need to then amend your motion.
Boy, do I ever. Okay, okay. All right, let's see. Let me- Yeah, okay. Amend the previous, amendment to the previous motion, which would would dismiss without prejudice the where are we, the 161.69 square foot DeBast star on the west elevation and would withdraw without prejudice the application for, I'm trying to find it here, the 228.97 square foot DeBast star on the east elevation. And would further amend the application to include a request for a for a 99 oh, wait, I think that's right. Yeah, I think it's what, a 99 square foot sign on the south elevation that would include both the Hardee's appendage and a 24 oh, no, wait.
It's 92 square feet, Mr. Chair.
Ninety, okay, 92 square feet sign that would include both the Hardee's appendage and the 32 square foot DeBast star. Okay.
What? That's all, no, no, no. Yeah, but it's all part of the one- No, that's not what he said.
Well, okay, well, we're for purposes of variance, we're considering the entire
The sum of those two pieces.
Panel, of which the basic features are the Hardee's and the star.
Do you mind separating them, rather than treating them as one sign?
Yeah. They presented them as two separate issues. The 59 foot is Hardee's. They didn't present it as the entire panel. Okay, okay, so, all right, so the variance request will consist of two separate requests. One for the Hardee's appendage and one for the the DeBast star. Okay. So, we will have three things to vote on. Two separate sign requests for the south side and one on the west, east side. Because the other sign on the east side is by right. Okay.
Where's the two on the east side?
There will only be one on the east side. It will be the Charbroil Burgers of seven feet. It will be a total of three signs, two south, one east.
It would sound like four, sound like four signs there.
Yeah, but one is by right.
Which one?
The Hardee's logo.
The bigger one.
The Hardee's on the, on the-
East side.
On the east.
Whatever, let's move on.
Yeah. No, I think that now gets it, okay? All right, so, is there a second for the amended motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
The star.
Okay, oh, I see, okay, all right, fine. Okay, are we ready to move on then?
I hope so.
Okay, all right, I want to thank everyone for their patience. This is difficult, but I think we're at least moving in the right direction.
I'd like to say thank you to all of you for your patience and apologize to everybody here for taking up so much of your time.
Okay, well, I think we can move along. Let's see, we had skipped over item number two, Michael North, Ten Bird Lane. Is there anyone here? Okay. Okay, good evening.
I don't have any stars.
Okay, and your name, sir?
Michael North.
Mr. North, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, I think you were here last year, or last year-
Last month.
Last month, time flies. And explained that you're seeking a variance for a kind of ground level deck, a pool, and a shed.
Correct.
Okay, and that hasn't changed. The reason that we couldn't act last time was we needed to clarify the publication, and we've done that. In the meantime, we've received one letter regarding this application, and let me just quickly read it into the record. "To zoning board of appeals," and this is signed by Jonathan and Jennifer Kaufman, who live at 12 Bird Lane, so it's the next door neighbors. "Michael North of Ten Bird Lane has petitioned the town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals for several variances to allow for a deck. One foot from the side lot, three feet is required. A pool 11 feet from the side lot line, where 15 feet is required. And a shed one foot from the side lot line, where six feet is required. The property and all the properties on Bird Lane are zoned as residential. If the town's EBA chooses to grant these significant variances, as a neighbor living adjacent to this property, we respectfully request that the board stipulate that these structures, the deck, the pool, and the shed, cannot be renovated beyond normal maintenance, and nothing can be added to these structures as any additions to these structures would more adversely impact the value, privacy, and aesthetics of our home and neighborhood. We do not want to cause undue hardship to the owner of the property as a longstanding neighbor with whom we have always gotten along well and without incident. But in the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, we ask that you consider the request for variance. And if it is approved, we respectfully request that you add a stipulation as per our appeal. Thank you for your time and attention." Signed, and again, it's Mr. and Mr. Kaufman. So, I guess I'll just ask if we put a condition saying that the deck, the pool, and the shed will remain substantially as they are, is that a problem?
No.
Okay. All right. Any questions, Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
No questions.
All right.
No questions.
Okay. Paul?
No.
Nope.
No.
Okay.
Question, do you, after you deliberate, should I stay around to hear your determination, or is that something that you do and send a letter?
You can call the zoning department tomorrow morning.
And find out, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you close, can we make sure that-
Oh, that's right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at Ten Bird Lane? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, recousels, okay. All right. That takes us to item number four, Texas Roadhouse, 2323 South Road. If you'd just state your name, please?
Matthew Raymond. Sorry, Matthew Raymond.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Raymond. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, and then if I could just ask, what is your connection with Texas Roadhouse?
I'm with Greenberg Faro. We're Texas Roadhouse's development consultant.
Okay. Okay. Now, it appears that you're here for a variance to allow a second wall sign of 18.1 square feet that's not facing a public road.
That's correct.
Okay, so, the information you've submitted, it appears that the sign you're proposing would be on the let's see, be the south side, yeah, okay. 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 And, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just want to point out that the base site plan, well, they're using an aerial, the building is no longer there. That's the large white thing you're seeing. But the outline of the buildings that you're seeing is also not the current site plan. And we pointed this out as part of the application. It doesn't change materially the need for the variance because the front of the Texas Roadhouse will be facing Anthony Drive, which is a private driveway. That's what's triggering the need for it, but as shown on the drawing, there are actually three buildings. The reality is there are only two.
Has it been determined what the second building is going to be?
Advanced auto.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's a retailer.
This is, this is, this building is no longer-
Okay. And if, you know, if I'm not mistaken, the the other sign, the one that faces Route 9, is, conforms to the zoning code, and so is by right.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and that door would serve as the main entrance to the, to the right, okay. Okay, Christine, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
No questions.
Paul?
Nope.
Tony?
No questions.
Phyllis? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application, Texas Roadhouse? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousels, okay, thank you very much. All right, item five. Gianni DeLello, 87 Delavern Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you just give us your name, please?
Gianni DeLello.
Mr. DeLello, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, so, can you briefly remind us why you're seeking a variance?
I built the house on 87 Delavern.
Okay.
And when the surveyor staked out the property, we didn't, I guess we didn't take into consideration, there's a little jog on the right side of the property, which is now therefore my deck is a little bit too close to the property line.
Okay, okay, and-
And the house is a brand new dwelling.
Yeah, but it's existing.
Yes.
Okay. Just before we go to the questions, we received one letter on this. "To zoning, I own both lots, which are adjacent to the lot in question here," he gives the number. "And I have no disagreement with granting the variance specified above." This is DiMarco. Okay.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no questions.
All right.
Questions?
Yeah.
I just want to clarify something because I don't want it to come back to haunt me later.
Yeah.
That 18 foot six was taken from the pier of the deck.
Okay.
But, so I do have a one foot cantilever on the deck, so I'm gonna, I don't know if that, if it goes by the pier or if it goes by the deck, I just don't want it to come back to haunt me.
This is the overhang issue.
Correct.
Is it from the over, okay.
Okay.
So, so what, you're saying there's about a foot overhang?
Yeah, it's like 11 inches. I measured it this morning, actually.
Okay. So, what you really need is a porch that's going to be located 17 feet.
I'd rather be safe. I'm not sure if he took it from there or not, and he's on vacation, the surveyor. So, I don't know if, I just don't want to hold this up because I have it sold and I'm ready to close on it.
To tell you the truth, it looks, I mean, the number here is from the footprint.
Oh, it is from the footprint, from the overhang.
I mean, I think you're okay.
Okay, great. I just didn't want it to come back to haunt me, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand, but the the edge of the deck
Right.
is flush with the two sides of the house.
Of the existing house, correct.
As I recall, when I was out there and looked at it.
Correct.
You're fine.
Oh, okay, excellent.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but good to check.
Absolutely.
Paul, any questions?
No questions. No questions.
Phyllis?
Just as an aside, on Marywood, there's a platform with a sign.
Yes. That was existing, and I wanted to remove it, but I wasn't sure if the town, if they had to go through the town for that or not. But that was existing from the original subdivision when the subdivision went in back in the 70s, so that's always been there. So, it's just a brick pier that's sitting there. With a four by four, must have been a sign hanging off it at one point.
Yeah, I suppose, okay.
So, I just didn't want to take it down and upset the whole neighborhood because it's kind of like a right of way for them, so I just left it. It doesn't look bad, it's not, you know, but it isn't there.
It was just a curiosity, yeah, thank you. No further questions.
I don't think it matters. It certainly doesn't matter.
Excellent.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application, 87 Delavern Avenue? Yes, ma'am.
You have to come up.
Yeah, you have to come up and state your name.
Hi, good evening, Maria Roman.
Ms. Roman, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I live on Delavern Avenue. I'm one of the adjoining property owners. Andy DiMarco, of course, wrote the letter, and it was a DiMarco subdivision. He's not going to go against it because he is selling those adjoining lots. Me, as a property owner, as you said, chairman earlier with Hardee's, that you were worried about setting precedents. I have a house going up between me and 79 and 69. And everybody stakes, they're digging, they're moving around. I literally see contractors moving their stakes, the backhoes move their stakes. As professional builders, they should be sure that their stakes are properly set. Now, if we let 87 go, then we're gonna let whatever- Now, if we let 87 go, then we're going to let whatever numbers between 79 and 69 change their lines, and then we're going to let the so-called lot between 79 and 81 possibly have different setbacks. I question the setbacks currently on this house, besides the, I believe there's a 30-foot drainage easement that goes through this lot.
In the rear, correct.
In the rear. And that there's going to be an additional easement to come through this lot for the house that's going to be built between 79 and 81, that the town needs to take in consideration, which I think will be a sewer line for that lot.
That's already in, the sewer line's already in now.
Your sewer line is already in now?
Yeah, that's, that's.
For the lot between 79 and 81.
I'm not sure the numbers, but there's an existing sewer line that is already in the easement to, for the other lot that's off of, of Delavern.
Oh, okay.
So I'm concerned with the setbacks and meeting where his porch is, meaning also the setbacks to the sewer line and the drainage easement, let alone the side property line that he's asking for. And all I'm saying is, if we keep continuing to allow a foot here, two feet here, five feet here, then everybody's all crammed in and devaluing the other houses and homes along Marywood, the neighborhood, and Delavern. And Sarah, I commend her for enforcing number 69, Delavern Avenue, when they were in violations, and she ticketed them. 69 obeyed, came, cleaned up, and did what she asked. And I asked the board to consider that these laws are in place for a reason.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Any further questions from the board? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay. Item number six, Popeyes Restaurant, 535 Haight Avenue. Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Your name, sir?
Eric Myler with Tinkelman Architecture.
Mr. Myler, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. Okay, so it appears there are two freestanding signs.
Yes, our request would be that due to the unique nature of the site through lot that connects two major traffic thoroughfares in the town, and the positioning of the building on the site, the applicant needs both signs to maintain reasonable visibility and maximizes potential for success as a business. The building is, is really fronting on Haight, Haight Avenue. It's almost invisible from, from Main Street, so the potential partial remedy of using the building to announce the presence of a, of the business doesn't really work in this case, due to the distance and sort of compounded by the fact that it's really the back of the building facing that way. So, we, we wanted to explore the ability to have two monument signs. Our, our case hopefully, hopefully laid out clearly, but the basic idea is that even though we're looking for an area variance for the sign, and also the location off the property line to improve visibility, that both signs would be compliant in and of themselves in terms of size, square footage, and meeting all the design guidelines in the zoning code.
Okay. Just so I get this straight, when we were out there and looked, both on Haight Avenue and on Main Street, it, it looks as if there are existing monument signs? And what, those would be removed?
Correct, there's a, as you stated, there's a sort of leftover framework from whatever, whether it was Nellie Kelly's, or maybe it was even prior to that, I don't know the history, but yes, there's a framework out there on, on the Main Street side, and I guess the Nellie Kelly's sign is still on Haight Avenue. We would be taking both those signs down and replacing them close to those locations. I have a site plan with the actual dimensions, but I think we're, we're looking to place them both three feet off the property line, and they would be per the design that's included in the drawings, which I can go through if you'd like.
Okay, good, okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions right now.
Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
Question. Refresh my memory, Mr. Chairman, the sign, if we look at, do we include the base in the size of the sign?
No.
No, no.
And what about the poles for the height of the?
Only, only if they were illuminated or somehow called out as part of the sign. Those are supports, so it's just the top.
And I, I do have a question, looking at, looking at the, and I'm not sure what we're looking at here, but looking at your rent, artist's rendition of, of the building, to say, I'm assuming that the Popeyes sign is not coming before us, because it meets the size constraints for zoning?
We've permitted one sign on the building. Typically, you have one sign on the building, which I believe is 15, 15 square feet, and then one freestanding sign, the monument sign, would be 12 square feet. So our variance request would be for the additional monument sign.
Okay, is there something on this end of the building, though? If you take that, take that down, please. I'm sorry.
On the west end.
Yeah, on the west. What is that little circle? Am I not seeing something, or am I seeing? Yeah.
This, this image was developed by Popeyes Corporate. Their methodology is that they produce an image generally depicting the building, but we're not looking for yet another sign on this building. That will not be on there.
That's fine. No questions. Thank you.
Paul?
The sign that you intend to put on the building, is it going to be that size, or is it really going to be 15 square feet?
It'll be 15 square feet. We would be submitting our signage package when we get our sign permit, and that would, that would have all the detailing of, of the permitted signs. What I, what I submitted was really more focused on the, on the variance needs.
Tony?
I have no questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Okay. So anyone in the audience wish to address the application for Popeyes Restaurant? Okay, seeing no one. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, recousels? Okay, thank you. Item seven, Joseph Kohler, 3 Van Dizer Dooser Road Drive.
Whatever.
Okay, yeah, yes. Just state your name.
Joseph Kohler.
Mr. Kohler, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, so, what are you proposing to do?
I have a house on 3 Van Dooser Drive. There's an addition on the house now. I want to remove that, as well as the detached garage, and replace it with a two-story addition. There's, I guess when this house was built, that, that garage was built with the house, and it was before the zoning codes, I imagine, because it's only nine feet from the property line now. So I'm looking to go, at the most, another four feet.
Okay, all right. All right. We have, we have received one letter on this, let me just read this into the record now, to Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Department. Let it be known, I object to the construction, which will be five feet from my property line. I feel it would be a problem in the resale of my home in years to come. It's signed Diane Serniglia of 86 Backin' Kill Road. Okay. And I think that's the only, the only thing that we've received on that. Okay. Questions, Christine?
So the garage is currently, the garage that you're going to be removing is currently five feet from the line?
Nine feet from the line.
Nine feet, okay. The addition would be five?
Yes.
That's, that's it, no, no other questions?
Okay, Betty?
I have no questions.
Art?
The tree line, is this on your side, or the? That's my side, yes. That's your side? Looks like more than nine feet. No more questions right now.
Okay. Speaking of those, those trees, can, can they remain there during the construction?
Two of them are coming out, the rest, the rest will stay.
Okay. What, two that were, what, probably right next to the garage?
Yeah, the back farther. The picture's kind of deceiving, but the two, they're just, that's where the garage is going to be. The garage is going to stick off the front of the house, to, just to make aesthetically pleasing.
Okay. So, but, but the, but the other vegetation?
The rest will stay, yes.
Yeah, okay. And this is going to be a two-story addition?
Yes.
Okay. With, with a full peaked roof, or is it?
Yes, it'd be a reversed gable, basically.
Okay.
Same pitch as the, as the existing roof.
Oh, oh, for the, for the same orientation that you have with the garage?
Just reversed.
Okay, okay. But it's, it's going to be two full stories, not?
Yes, yeah, two full stories, yeah.
Yeah, dormers or anything? Okay. Paul?
No questions.
Tony?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Phyllis?
What do you mean when you say it's going to be reversed?
It's a reverse gable. The roof line won't run as, this one will run the opposite as the existing house.
This way?
Yes, it'll, yes. I can show you exactly.
Okay. Can I ask why you need the additional?
My kids go to Spack.
Space holes? No, no, the additional, like, instead of building on the imprint of the garage, why do you need the extra space to get closer to the property line?
It's not big enough. The footprint isn't big enough. It's not wide enough.
Okay. And did you consider building out the back?
It's not, it's not feasible.
Because?
The hill, the back is a hill, and aesthetically, it would look terrible. I mean, I think this, what I, I mean, I've searched a lot of avenues, this aesthetically, I think this is going to make huge improvements in the neighborhood, because if you look what's there now, I don't know if you drove by, it's really, whoever put this addition on didn't give much thought to it.
And what kind of siding are you going to have on the addition?
Well, the house is, is red brick. So I'm leaning somewhere in the area of a rust, rusty beige, something that's going to go with the brick.
But like aluminum or?
Vinyl.
Or vinyl?
Yeah, four-inch one.
And how big is the addition going to be? I'm sorry.
24 by 36.
If you have any, okay. I don't have any questions right now, Jim.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 3 Von Van Dizer Road Drive?
Yes.
Susan Kenny.
Kenny, you said?
Yes.
Ms. Kenny, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you, God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay. Nice to meet you, Joe, by the way.
Hi, how are you?
I'm new to all of this and very ignorant, so when the letter came in the mail, our concern, that's my mom back there, and that the neighbor who's at 86.
Okay.
I live at 88, it's Backin' Kill Road.
Okay.
So we've been there for 44 years. So, again, I guess, just kind of wondering what the house would look like. I mean, I'm all, for approval, I understand, I know you've got lots of kids.
No, I understand your house, you understand.
Our concern was that when they said that it was five, coming five feet from the property line, didn't realize that it was already nine feet from that. So I was like, oh my God, he's going to come even closer, but technically, he kind of is. So, is the house going to be, like, you know where your little trees are?
Yeah.
So it's not going to come?
Well, that's what it's going to look like in the front.
Okay, I just, I just want to remind, technically, you're supposed to address?
I'm sorry.
The board and not have a discussion between yourselves. I'm, but, but you certainly can ask the questions. We will ask the applicant to answer.
So I guess, just wondering what the house would be like. Our home right now, when you look out, it's, I don't know how to describe it, I don't know, homes. You could walk in, you go upstairs or downstairs. When you go downstairs, now we're half in the ground, so our big picture window is looking out to his home on the side. So our concern is just to make sure that it's not kind of like an eyesore, that it does look nice, if any of our trees were affected by, because I don't think you can tell in the picture, but there's like a tree here or something, like, would that hit then the house? Would it need to be taken down? I mean, because that's really our only tree that gives us shade.
Okay.
Is there not, right across the street from you, it, it appeared to me that the house, if, if you looked right across from you and a bit to the right, standing on your front stoop, has that house been added on to? Because it looks like it had a second two-story addition.
That's a split-level house.
It is.
Yeah, that was never built on.
Because that seemed to me like what your house would look like, or very close to that.
Well, not necessarily, but.
Okay.
Like I said, I just think it would make a huge improvement to the value of the house and the neighbors as well. I mean, if you look at the house, it's, it's not the most, you know, feeling.
It is a tiny house, it's not.
Yeah, yeah. And?
I mean, growing up there, I know what the house looks like.
So this, this addition would be a little closer to your backyard, really?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, not understanding that he already is nine from the line, it was just kind of a concern when you say like five feet. So it's really just four more feet coming this way, kind of. That's what I didn't understand when I got the letter and everything.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, I think you, you got it. Yeah.
Well, and to, you know, just wondering, you know, what it would look like when it's done, because now that's what we would be looking at and what we would see, you know, come the time. Are there any other questions you guys would like to? That's what we asked, about the trees.
You can't take your trees down.
Not unless you want them, I'll take them down, but no.
It's the shrubs. And then how, how does that like affect us for resale or anything when we sell, doesn't have anything to do with like our property or?
Shouldn't have anything to do with that, right?
Yeah.
Because he's still staying within his, on his property line.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I'm done.
Okay, 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 thank you, ma'am.
Diane Serniglia.
Oh, Ms. Serniglia, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I help you, God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, my question is, supposedly, you're not nine feet from me. Supposedly, he's 20 feet from me. See, I'm on 86 Backin' Kill Road. So from the looks of it, he's going back also.
Actually, I'm coming up, right now, actually, the satellite, the satellite view of the house.
Yeah, I saw the satellite.
I'm actually bringing it closer to the front. It's going to be actually shorter, only four feet off the back of the house, as opposed to the 12 feet that it is now.
I mean, the, the length of your existing house is the twenty-five, and you're going
Yes.
You want to know how many feet he's going to be from my property line, I don't believe it's nine. He's coming five, I'm losing fifteen feet.
Which one is yours?
I'm eighty-six back in Kilbrow.
These maps don't tell us.
Yeah, it just don't help.
If you're looking at his house, you're to the right or the left?
I'm sorry.
If you're looking at his front door.
In other words, he's coming into my backyard, you're this.
Doesn't help us. Are you to the right or to the left of his house?
I'm to the.
Looking at his house.
She's this, I'm to the right of his house. This is me, this is eighty-six. She's the corner one, eighty-eight, I'm eighty-six.
You're, you're behind my shed.
Oh, she's.
Oh, you're in the back.
Yeah, where his, the, the new shed he put up, I'm behind that. She's, does that show on there?
Yes.
Three, eight.
They're not impacting that property line at all. We're not impacting that at all.
It's actually moving further away from your property, not getting closer.
No, I'm moving further away.
No, it's getting further away, it's moving more towards, uh, Van Duser.
He's moving.
The back of the existing structure is closer to your property line right now than the back of the proposed addition, according to this diagram. Yeah, that's correct.
I don't know, I wish that, you know, someone had come and said, you know, this is what I'm going to do.
I didn't realize it was an issue, I would have been more happy to, but this is the, this is the existing house here, the, the outline here is what the addition is going to be. So I'm actually coming farther away from your property.
I don't know, when I called here, they said I was, you know, to get these drawings and so forth, that I was twenty feet, and he was going to be within five feet of mine, so maybe it was confusing which house I was at.
I think that's, I think that's exactly what happened.
Yeah, yeah, so it might have been their house, not mine.
Is, Ms. Kenny is the one in the corner lot, correct?
Right.
Yeah, 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 I think, yeah, it was just, it, like, we, the, the, the maps that we all work off are, are through the counties, it's called Parcel Access Service, and there's a lot of information in there, but one of the things that they don't have on the maps are the street addresses. They just have the, the parcel numbers, and so it's really easy to confuse one lot with another. So if that's what the case, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's what happened.
Yeah, I was just concerned, as I say, the backyard comes right down, and the way, you know, he built a very nice shed there, and, uh, but I just didn't want to lose my whole view of his backyard.
No, no, nope, okay. Okay, any, um, other questions from board members? Any other people from the audience that wish to talk about this? Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousels, okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Jim?
Yes. A local concern, okay, okay, um, that brings us to the end of the, uh, public hearings.
Yes.
Do we want to take a five-minute recess?
What do I always say, yes?
Okay, we, we will stand in recess for, uh, a, a few minutes, and let's try to move this along. Okay, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to, uh, resume the meeting.
Yes, we are.
I think the star.
You're lucky.
I do. Okay. Well, now in the deliberation phase, uh, the, uh, item has been dismissed. Uh, item number two, Michael North, Ten Bird Lane. This would be variances to allow an existing deck to be located one foot from the side lot line, where twenty feet is required, an existing pool to be located eleven feet from the side lot line, where fifteen feet is required, and three, an existing shed to be located one foot from the side lot line, where six feet is required. Uh, this is a type-two action, so there's no further environmental review that we need to do. The, uh, there's no, nothing from the county, uh, there's a staff report that, um, indicates that there's, um, uh, no, um, basically, um, there's no, nothing to indicate that this would be, um, a, a problem. Okay, and we had one, uh, letter requesting that we put a condition on this that, um, the size and the height of the existing structure should not be changed. Okay, any, uh, any discussion?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, um, Christine, do you want to make the motion on this, please?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report, um, with the modification that the size and height should not be changed. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, uh, let's see, did, did we put the condition?
We did.
Okay, very good, all right, okay, so, uh, motion to approve the variances in item number two been made and seconded? There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousels, okay. Item number three, Hardee's, twenty-two seventy-five South Road. So let's start with, um, okay, uh, a variances to allow additional wall signs, where only one wall sign of one hundred square feet is allowed. And so these would, this, these, three variances would include, um, let's see, um, a, uh, fifty-eight point nine-two square foot Hardee's appendage sign on the south elevation. A, um, a.
We're going to keep these all separate, right?
Okay, you want to do, okay, all right, so let's just, okay, let's do that one, so the, this is the, uh, so, okay, I, let's see, I, I move that, um, um, we, the board approve a variance to allow a fifty-eight point nine-two square foot Hardee's appendage sign on the south elevation.
Second.
Okay, um, let me see, I have to have all the, the.
Do we have to do secret?
No, it, there's, it's, uh, uh.
We did a coordinated review.
Yeah, there's a negative deck on that, so, okay, so on this variance, um, I move this decision is based on the review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and I don't believe there's a staff report. I don't think so, not that I know of. I mean, does anybody have a?
No.
I don't, I don't believe so, okay, um, okay, and the board adopts as findings, uh, the following, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Um, the, the board finds that, um, that this section of Route nine is a heavily commercial, uh, area, and, um, um, many similar signs are found on buildings, and this will be consistent. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible to pursue. This is a, a new business, um, signs, um, are essential, um, there's no other location except by the front door. Uh, whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, within the, um, the context of the other signs, it is, it is not, um, essential, in fact, it's, uh, it's within, it's less than a one-hundred-square-foot, um, wall sign that, um, would be, um, granted by right. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions of the district. Uh, it will, the board finds it will not, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. It's self-created in the sense that, um, they're putting up a new building, but that doesn't preclude granting the variance. Okay, uh, so there's a, a motion to approve the, um, large sign on the, on the south elevation, is there a second?
Do we need to add any comments to satisfy the county?
Pardon?
Do we need to add any comments to satisfy the county?
Um, that, uh, well, I mean, there, I guess the, the comment that I would make to the county is that, um, their request is that the applicant substantially reduce the requested signage, and the applicant has. Okay. Um, okay, is there a second?
Like, three.
Already? Okay, okay, all right, uh, so any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it's seven-zero, so we're over the supermajority. Okay, the next, um, uh, I move that the board approve a request for a variance to allow a seven-point-five-eight square foot char-broiled burgers on the east elevation.
Second.
Um, I, I move the board, uh, approve this request. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, the result of site visits, uh, by board members, and again, there's no staff report, but, um, the findings of the board are really substantially the same as, um, the findings in the, the previous, um, um, variance, so I'll just, um, appen, append those. Okay, um.
Second.
Is there a second, okay, there is a second, okay, uh, as far as the county is concerned, again, um, they, they've, they have actually removed one of the two, uh, similar signs, so now they're, they're asking for exactly half of what they originally came in for. Any comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, recousels, okay, and now, uh, the third, um, I move the board, approve, uh, variance for, um, a, where is it? It is, um, oh, okay, um, the variance for a thirty-two-point-one-nine square foot DeBast Star on the south elevation. Um, this decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, and the result of site visits by board members, um, in the, um, oh, let's see, uh, ba, 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 ba. Let's see, um, as findings, um, okay, um, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, the board finds that the DeBast Star proposed for the south elevation, um, is, um, functions, um, as a sign, uh, that's attached to the side of the building, and, uh, that as a sign, it is, uh, consistent with, um, the, um, sizes and placement of signs, uh, up and down Route nine, and will not change the character. Uh, the benefit sought, achieved by some other method, um, it's, um, it's part of a, um, unified panel that attaches to the south side of the building, um, there's, there's no, um, in, any other, inner method of mounting the two signs would be, would be, uh, difficult to do. Uh, whether the requested area variance is substantial, um, considering the size of the sign, it is, it is not a substantial sign. Whether the proposed variance has an adverse, um, effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions, the board finds it has no, uh, physical or environmental effect. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, um, clearly it is self-created, but that doesn't preclude, that doesn't preclude approving the variance. Okay, um, all right, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
For the reasons I stated earlier, I think all the stars are architectural in nature and not... Should not be defined as a sign. Acting at this one as a sign, even though it is, I think, interestingly different than the other two walls, bigger wall ones, I think complicates matters.
Okay. Any other? Okay. And as far as the county's comments, in all three of the signed variances that we've just approved are, even taken together, are substantially less than the original proposal and, in fact, are meeting the county's request. Okay. If there's no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Recouzles? All right. Six to one. Okay. All right. Then, we need to dismiss, without prejudice, the following...
I think you did that, Mr. Chair, earlier.
Did we do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, then... Then, we're done?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
Yes.
All right. Item four, Texas Roadhouse, 2323 South Road. A variance to allow a second wall sign of 18.1 square feet not facing a public road.
What did the county say for that one?
They have local concerns.
So, there's nothing from the county. This is an unlisted action, but Planning Board has made a negative declaration, so we don't have to do any environmental review. There's a packet... A staff report in your packet recommending that this be approved. Questions? Okay. I think this one's pretty straightforward. Betty, do you want to make the motion on this one?
Sure. I make a motion that the board grant the variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations as found in items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay. There are no further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Recouzles? Okay. Item four is approved. Item five, Gianni DeLello, 87 Delavern Avenue. A variance to allow an existing rear porch to be located 18 feet 6 inches from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. So, type-two action, so there's no review, no comment from the county, and there is a report... Or a staff report recommending that this be approved. Any questions? Discussion? Okay. Art, you want to do this one?
Sure. Well, I do have a discussion. I'm sorry. I do have something on this one.
Oh, okay.
The young lady that was here saying that these other buildings are going up, and she's concerned.
Oh.
Can't we... Or Neil, can't we stress to the building department, is it? That would be in charge of that, that they double-check some of the lot lines before these structures are... Because she's alluding that the contractor out there moving stakes. And I don't know if that's...
We require as-bilts once they're done.
So, they do double...
Yeah, I mean...
Before the property... Before the building is completed, right?
Yeah. Well, right. Before we issue a CO for whatever is being constructed, right? So, that is being done.
Okay. So, her concern is pretty much not a concern?
Well, I mean, it's a concern. We're...
But... But we're on top of it.
Yeah. I mean, we... You know? I mean, honestly, you know, when a site is under construction, if somebody is being dishonest to... So, as to move a stake from inspection to inspection, we may not pick it up, but we do at the end.
At the end. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. This is... This one, I'm not sure quite why it came up, but there's this odd little jug in the property line.
Well, that's what's driving the need for the variance because the remainder of the house is over the 20s, 20 feet setback.
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole deck is too. It's just that little... Just a vast quarter of it.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I...
Okay.
Not clear why that was... That lot line was laid out the way it looked. But that's not an issue. Okay. All right. Yeah.
Thank you. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report, and there are no conditions.
Second.
Okay. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Recouzles? Okay. Item number five is approved. Item number six, Popeyes Restaurant, 535 Haight Avenue. A variance to allow two 12-square-feet freestanding signs where only one freestanding sign of 12 square feet is allowed. And the second, both freestanding signs to be located three feet from the highway right-of-way where 10 feet is required. It's a... There's a negative declaration from the Planning Board, so we don't have to do the environmental review. The county has indicated it's a matter of local concern, and in the packet, you'll find a staff report recommending that this be approved. Okay. Any discussion?
Pretty small signs.
It's a small...
We usually see there...
Well, and getting rid of the existing ones is...
That's a plus.
A real improvement. Okay. Paul, do you want to...
Sure. I move to approve the area variance request set forth in item six. It's based upon site visits of board members, testimony at a hearing, recommendations of the... Of the department. And I adopt items one through five of the... Of the memo from the board's recommendations.
The staff report. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
Second.
Oh, there's a second. Thank you. Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Recouzles? Okay. So, item number six is approved. Item seven, Joseph Kohler, 3 Van Duser Drive. A variance to allow a proposed two-story addition to be located five feet from the side lot line where 20 feet is required. It's a type-two action. There was nothing from the county, and there's a staff report recommending that this be approved. Also, just note that there were some questions from neighbors. Okay. Any discussion on this? I think my only concern is that the existing trees and vegetation be preserved, at least insofar as is practical. I think you've... I think the indication was that a couple would have to be taken... What? Two trees, I guess, would have... Hedges would have to be taken out.
The staff... The staff recommendation is that the Mr. Kohler make allowances for plantings to preserve the property line in a privacy.
Okay. I think that certainly... That would certainly be a reasonable condition to put on this. I mean, I think... I think there are existing plantings, but...
Replace anything that may be disrupted during the construction.
Okay. No. I think that... I think that gets to the intent here.
I heard a no. Did you hear a no?
I thought during the public hearing, there was an indication that actually some of the hedges or trees were where the building was going to be. So, I think it would be impractical to replace those since there'd be a building in that spot. But to the extent practical to either maintain or... I think it's better just to say a vegetative boundary between the properties.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, Tony, you want to make the motion on this one?
Okay.
If you've got the format.
Item number seven. I move that the board approve the request for the area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing, results of site visits by the board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts findings and determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. The approval of this variance is also subject to the following conditions. That the applicant, upon completion, will maintain a shrubbery to preserve the privacy between the two properties, and also that the addition would be completed and painted so as to match the current residence and provide screening from neighboring property.
Second.
Okay. There's no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recouzles? Okay. It is... Item number seven is approved. That brings us to the end of the agenda. I don't believe there's any... There any other business to come before us. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And once again, we wish Carmen well.